I'd like to call the evening session of the November 3rd, 2025, meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Welcome all of you here this evening with us in person and also watching on live stream. Welcome to y'all as well. I will say this morning, we had an invocation and a pledge, and we will not repeat that tonight. And also a reminder of the six board priorities, which are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, public safety, our county employees, and tonight's session will mostly deal with land use. With that, I will move on to the first item, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Any questions, comments, or changes needing to be made to that?
Mr. Chairman, we approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay. The agenda is approved. This brings us to public comments. If there's anyone here wishing to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. If you would, state your name and your town or township that you're from, and you'll have three minutes to speak to the board. And again, just a reminder to the board and to the audience that this is not a time for a conversation, but the board, it's time for the board to listen. So with that, I will open it up if there's anyone wishing to come forward and speak. Good evening.
Hello. Hi. I'm Shakira Frazier. I'm from Wilson Mills. I've been there for about five years. I'm here speaking on behalf of Down Home. So first off, my name is Shakira Frazier, and I'm a part of a group called Down Home, North Carolina. More importantly, we are community members and residents of Johnston County, and we are here today on behalf of working families, seniors, and young people across our state. We are the people who call North Carolina home. We are seeing a troubling reality unfold. The services that form the backbone of our communities, like our healthcare, clinics, our public libraries, our schools, and our infrastructure are facing cuts and uncertainty. For us, working people who rely on these services, this is about, this is not a political debate. It is a direct threat to our stability and well-being. These challenges are born from decisions made far away from this place, where the priorities seem skewed and our communities are an afterthought. When tax policies favor handouts to the wealthy over investments in the common good, the consequences ripple down to our main streets and our kitchen tables. The gridlock we see at the federal level cannot become the model for our home that we live, that we love. That is why we are here today. We believe that local government should be, should be for our first, for us, and most importantly, the first line of defense. We need our community, our county commissioners and city councilors and our local representatives to be champions for our communities. We need them to stand in the gap, protect the people they are elected to serve, and to hold the line for us. Our call to action is clear. We urge Johnston County electeds to be a voice of reason and compassion. We review, please review the resolution shared with you all that Liz, our organizer, will pass out. We also emailed it to you guys. So yes, we call on you to advocate tirelessly for the reopening of our government and for the full funding of essential services, especially healthcare. In these uncertain times, we need our local government to back us up more than ever. This is a pivotal moment, and we invite our local representatives to stand in solidarity with working people in every corner of North Carolina. This is a chance to choose a different path, one of proactive leadership and unwavering commitment to the community. If our elected leaders fail to draw the line here and demand better for their constituents, it will be difficult to avoid the conclusion that our needs are not the primary concern. We need them to demonstrate through their actions that we are on the side of the people who strive every day to build a good life here. We built, we believe in the power of local leadership to change this story. We are asking that, we are asking them to choose to lead, to partner with us, and to help build a North Carolina that works for everyone. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hey there, good evening. My name is Joe Kennedy. I'm a U.S. Army veteran, and I'm also representing Down Home. I grew up in Johnston County in Smithfield. I remember back in the day when we had more farmland than residential communities. Some of you remember. I can tell you do, sir, by the smile on your face. I want to talk about the impacts of this big, beautiful bill and what it can do to our communities as somebody who was homeless as a youth, currently works in homeless outreach services, and some of the needs that it may affect in our community. So point number one, $168.6 billion social security income reduction is expected to occur over the next 10 years. Currently in my outreach, we have one elderly man who is disabled and suffers from massive seizures. He gets social security income, which is enough to buy him food, but not to get him out of the woods. Literally, he lives in a tent in the woods. I was also briefly a caretaker for a disabled young man who had EDS POTS and a litany of other conditions. He was kicked out of his house because his father had caregiver fatigue. Every time he wheels his wheelchair, he is tearing and consistently dislocating his shoulder. When he applied for SSI due to his inability to work, he was told he only qualified for $967 a month. You couldn't rent a shoebox in North Carolina for $967 a month. One time, it was pretty good money in North Carolina, but as things have come in, cost of living has gone up. Point two, there will be a higher cost to Medicare and Medicaid beneficiaries. For homeless people, the cost of healthcare is already a huge fear. We had another homeless man who was also elderly. He was released from a hospital with the wrong-sized osseobac. He was jerry-rigging the bag so that his insides wouldn't spill on him, and by insides, I mean feces and urine. And he was relying on his fellow homeless people and those who volunteered at my local church to help him with this while he was living in the woods. And no one should live in that type of indignity. Point three, this bill will reduce SNAP by $186 billion over the next decade. And this is bad due to the impact primarily of at-risk families. Last December, the ministry I work with had extended to hotels. We even dressed up to deliver presents to the children. I know I'm a little bit hefty, but not as hefty as Santa, so I had to do some things to make, get to that size. We got to know these families and learned most of them were about $300 or less and consistently almost short for paying their extended stay hotel. The average cost for a family of three is $774 at the lowest end. Families don't need less support. Families to thrive in America with the cost, with the CPI increasing 3% of the last year need more. Even as we speak, after I leave here, I'm going to get on a call tonight to try and figure out where a mother and her five children can park a converted van to use as temporary housing as she's fleeing a domestic violence situation. I'm going to have to work overtime to ensure that this woman can get the resources to feed and house her children now that SNAP benefits aren't being paid out. So on top of being afraid of her life, afraid this man is going to find her and possibly beat her to death and choke her to death in front of her kids, she's also got to figure out how to keep them all alive in a van and keep them happy. I mean, the fear that she has to live with every day. I implore you to sign a resolution and stand up for these people. These humans deserve every bit of care and dignity as you or I. Each and every one of you has family. Each and every one of you has loved ones. None of you would want to die in these conditions that some of these people have, and the government can't solve everything. It's not the, it's not the function of the government. But what we can do is alleviate and to help other people and to stand up for them as much as we can. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Liz Lynn. I'm a resident in Clayton, and I'm here supporting Down Home and members here that were just previously speaking and not to reiterate anything that they were saying, but I do just want to clarify for anybody that listen, that is listening, that we have sent in a resolution to the county commissioners about what we have been talking about. We've been having people canvassing, hearing a lot of different stories on the doors. A lot of people aren't able to come out due to limitations and accessibility issues, and we found folks that are able to help tell stories, and we're trying to find more people to help highlight the impact that things are happening. And we do see y'all as people that are elected that can help us hold that front line. And in that resolution, just to simplify, because I know it's a packet, but it requires some of the staff, like the county manager and some of you all, to create and maintain a public transparency webpage, adding like an extra tab on the webpage just to, and to create that transparency and also coordinate with school officials on like the impact of the cuts to schooling and organize and conduct a public hearing. We think that, as well as all the stories that we're hearing, that y'all should also be able to hear that, and we could also help support in those areas. And after being able to, you know, do that public hearing, prepare a comprehensive public report that will help us engage in advocacy with state and federal officials. These activities will be accomplished using existing resources already, and the greater fiscal impact comes from the federal and state budget uncertainties that this resolution addresses and which threatens our federal and state funding that support our counties. So we're hoping that you can all take a look at them. We will be following up via email. If y'all have any questions or comments, you can definitely reach out to me. Butch Lauder has my information, but if y'all need it as well, I can get that accessible to you, and we'll try to have more people get connected with you all so you can know and find out ways that we can help on a county level protect our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Anyone else?
Hello. Good evening, guys. I had not intended on speaking, but I was moved to do so. My name is Yolanda, but I remember Butch. Me and, we ran from Clayton, right? Yeah, he remembers me, Mrs. Peterson. I live in Clayton, and I wanted to, as a student of law, I wanted to really understand what your role is and how to help us. And in doing some research, I saw that commissioners are, like my colleagues previously said, are the first line of defense. So whatever's coming from the top down, you guys are in a position of advocacy to help those who cannot help themselves. Now, to Liz's point, I was canvassing for the past few weeks, and I met a gentleman, and he is, he has lost his Medicaid. He is in a wheelchair. He is going through dialysis, and he says that, "I don't know what I'm going to do. You know, you could take my food away from me, but I could, I could find food, but I can't, I have to go to dialysis twice a week. If I don't, I'll die." And I think about stuff like that all the time, and I think, you know, as a person in a position of power, which really is ultimately advocacy, you know, maybe you guys should hear, you know, know that what's going on out in these, my friend in West Virginia would say, in these hallers, you know, out in these hallers, and hear how people are really being affected by every, by these things that are coming from the top down. It's a moral issue, it's not a political issue, okay? I just wanted to remind you of that, that as a commissioner, you are in a position of advocacy. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will move on to the next item. Also, I did want to say, there were no emails, so we did get the email from Ms. Lynn with the resolutions. Okay. And I will add, for those of you who are emailing the commissioners, there's commissioners, and it's now JohnstonNC.gov instead of the old .com, so just remember that as your email. Sometimes it makes it through, sometimes it doesn't. With that, though, we will move on to the public hearings. The first and only case we have tonight is case 2505, and I will now open that zoning hearing and call on Brastain Newton, our planning director, to provide us with the case background on this.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. So your rezoning case this evening is 25-05. This is a petition to rezone 6.69 acres located at 6232 Raleigh Road in elevation township from residential to conditional zoning or general business conditional zoning district. Owner applicant Curtis Farrell. Conditional zoning request involves specific stated uses as a part of the conditions, and this is outdoor storage, parking, commercial vehicles, and semi-loading and unloading. The surrounding land uses, zoning and land uses is AR and used for residential and agricultural purposes and a high school which is nearby, and this is close to but not in interstate highway interchange overlay, which is an more expansive district, which allows a myriad of uses and just kind of creates a little more leniency with regard to uses. Traffic concerns Raleigh Road, this portion of Raleigh Road has a count of about 4,500 vehicles per day. This is a 2023 count, and it does appear on our comprehensive transportation plan as needing improvement. With regard to our land use plan, this property is located in the regional mixed-use center, albeit on the very periphery of that, of that land use place type or future land use place type. And just for your, just to remind you, this area, this place type is intended to be centers of activity that include a mix of retail, restaurant, service office, civic, and institutional uses. And you will see in your packet on page six of 22 or seven of 22, the stated conditions, you will find 16 stated conditions that were either proposed or negotiated between staff and the applicant. And at this time, I'm glad to answer any questions you may have. You also see in your package, you do have a site plan.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? And what are the, the potential uses and the general uses in that? Is residential?
From, as a residential, as it's residentially zone, essentially, you can, you can build a home on it, you could potentially farm it, a church, a place of worship could be developed on-site. In certain situations, most government facilities, especially those associated with public safety, could be developed on-site as well, but it's an extremely limited, limited district for AR. General business, if it was a general use district, that's probably where is the most expensive non-industrial district we have. So non-residential or non-industrial district we have, which could allow anything from automotive repair to contractor's office, even small-scale warehousing. In this particular situation, it is conditional zoning, general business conditional zoning, and the uses would be limited to outdoor storage, parking, commercial vehicles, and semi-loading and unloading. I do not believe there's any detail in the applicant's, in the application that gives us any idea on what type of outdoor storage and what type of commercial vehicles would be, would be allowed to park on the property.
Any other questions for Mr. Newton?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Newton. I will now ask the applicant to come forward to present any relevant information to help us make a decision on this case.
Thank you all. I'm Bob Spence. I think I know most of you. And we want to present this to be sure that we get, I, Mr. Farrell came to me after the planning board meeting, and I want to be sure that, that everybody understands what he's tried to do, because he's tried to do it very sensitively and compatibly with the community and to make almost an ideal use of this spot. I have with me Max Harris, who's a young lawyer from Chapelville in Campbell and just graduated, and he's just going to help me with his displays, and so I want to get him involved in having some hearings. But the gist of this case is that we're going to have basically a service business there. An intent is to provide, with a very sophisticated company that Curtis is going to lease to, is to provide a avenue where the relating businesses in this area, which is going to be obviously a high-growth area, you know, it certainly is another out of 40 that's coming here, scaffolding, okay? About twice a week, he will have a semi-truck come in. It's considered two times a week, not during the school bus hours, and just to deliver and takes the scaffolding parts. The storage on the site is just going to be this, got a building, and it's just going to fix it for scaffolding so that contractors can get scaffolding so that they can have someone there who can explain to them how to put the scaffolding together and what scaffolding parts they need. Now, some of them may know that, but it varies with the job. So there are no retail sales here. There'll be an office person in there. Should be no deliveries there, except you will have pickup trucks with normal contractor pickup trucks, you know, mostly reasonably modest contractors, and they'll have trailers. And those, those trips, we think will probably be 10 pickup trucks a week, okay? So he's chosen a business that has the least impact that you could almost put on that road, okay? Has the least traffic impact, okay? And I will show you in a minute the, the sketch of the site plan. Even the in and off access of these twice-a-week semis will be strictly controlled and will be allowed to do it with minimum impact to traffic, and it's all going to be southbound, and any turning of the truck will be on-site. I contrast this, these 10 pickups a week and the other two transfers. If you drive in and drive out, the traffic engineers say that's two trips, but in any case, that's what's going to happen. They're going to drive in, they're going to drive out. The two, one residence, which the Institute of Traffic Engineers says is 10 trips a day, not a week, a day. And we know this is going to be a high-growth area with, with residences, and we know that this area, for instance, this subdivision down the road from it, has 20 houses. That's according to the traffic engineers, 200 trips a day. So with all 20 houses. If you were to take this six acres and divide it up into houses, and you would get another, maybe 18 lots, 12 lots at, you know, 10 per day, 120 volumes a day. In contrast, if you were to put there a restaurant or some other retail business, you would get high traffic. This is designed for minimal traffic. You're only going to come there occasionally to get these scaffolding, and then you're going to drive off, okay? There's not a big storage of buildings out there. It's been through DOT, they have no objections or concerns. As a matter of fact, as I said, I challenge you to think of what kind of, what kind of use you're going to make of that property would have less impact than this particular use. But you've got to understand it. I think that's not happened real well. We're going to always, when we go in and out, all the, the traffic will go in, southbound, and come out southbound. It will not cross the road. And the turnaround areas and the design of the lot, which I'll show you later, are to facilitate that, that non-impactful exit and entering. There is going to be minimum visible impact. We will show you the, okay, just go back, I'm not ready. So it'll be minimal visible impact, and that's because we'll have screen. So the, there's also woods there, which are a large buffer we should not be interfered with. It's also primarily GED soil. It drains well, and in the woods next to the creek, it gets to be B soil. That obviously floods because on creek, but none of that's going to be touched, and all those woods will look good and, and remain there. It is a highway interchange district. If you got the, and there originally, you know, those highway interchange districts are in a circle, and there, somebody takes basically a circle of compass and draws it around the interstate to do the planning. This district expanded as growth comes and, and the highway area is more compatible with existing uses. And if you see everything shaded here, it goes across, so across, has over substantial area, it's no longer circular because it's been grown, it's grown. So, so if you take GAS, Johnson County, you get the basic original circle. You see how it's expanded over on the, the more western side, okay? This wood, considering this in the highway, right next to this highway district, it would be adjacent wood. I think no expansion at all compared to what's on the other side. The, you can see Mr. Farrell's lot, it's immediately adjacent to the original circle, and some of those lots, lot between it, they would be in the circle. So in any case, it's very close to this highway district. You can change it. Can you change it? Here is what I was trying to say. It's a wooded area, we're going to keep it wooded area. It's a triangle, so it'll largely be buffer. Right at the northeast end, it's going to be a 45-degree angle access road, close traffic, including the semis twice a week. Will go down, south, come in, where they'll unload their stuff, back up, turn around, and they can get them out of separate entries. And that, that high-volume traffic that is going to be twice a week. What could you get less traffic in there? You've got a school up substantially here, up north, and of course, they're doing dozens of buses. We're not going to get in the way of the buses, okay? This is the regional mixed-use center. We are a service business. You can see fitting in there, we are the least impactful service business or other business you could, could put in there. I mean, you're going to put a restaurant in there, you're going to put civic use in there, you're going to put office use with traffic. We will have one office in there, but it's not as if it's going to be making office deliveries. Or you're going to put retail in there, it'd be much higher traffic. So it's, it's a very low traffic right in there. We think it's consistent with the regional plan and trying to get that service use in Here is, I understand it's to be a four-lane road. Some of the thought was in there, they say it's, they've already gotten notice, they're going to put in four-lane road. I don't know. I can tell you from the website of DOT, they are planning to have right here Raleigh Road, they're planning to expand that now, it's on the website, and expand that intersection because they expect that to be a growth area, okay? They expect Raleigh Road, something more parallels, 40 already, 50, will have growth. And there is immediate plan, which is upgrade that intersection, upgrade the intersection here and upgrade on the other side. There is a, if you think that well-run businesses know the area, there is a Dollar General over here, and there's already a Dollar General over here. So Dollar General's on both sides, okay? I think they know what they're doing. They're not there for no reason. In any case, again, with all that growth in the area, this is a great use there. It supplements some of the growth, helps people, and it provides little no impact. Next. There's a truck with scaffolding, okay? Those semis will come in twice a week. They don't need that much, but we need it. Next. There, there's scaffolding. You talk, it's stored, as an example of it. Here is the proposed landscaping buffer. There's a subdivision, um, located to the south, um, separated by other land. We're basically propose to screen it with fence, the cedar type trees or any other type tree, if that you want. Outside the fence to try to screen it. We've got woods here, which we're not touching. It's not like that subdivision, we're not clear cutting a lot. And, um, then we're going to, he's already having to mow the grass there twice a week. Um, next one. You can see it's more from the street. Trees designed, and he's worked on, and here's what it would look like. It would be a very good appearance and not for public entry, it's just to make a good appearance of that four-lane lot. More pictures of that, again. Okay, it could be agricultural residential, like on Plummer Road, okay? Agricultural residential can, does not have conditions. We've come in and asked for conditions, for conditional use. This is Plummer Road. I spent two weeks in court last, two days, and three days preparation last week in court on this beautiful site, where this is immediately adjacent to the neighboring house, and it's full of chickens, okay? It's also full of roosters, two, sometimes three. And those roosters like to crow at four AM in the morning. That is the glory of agricultural residential. If you've got a neighbor, who's that mean? Also put a building there, also raised all the dirt there, so the water flows downhill onto their neighbor, okay? They don't like, obviously. Um, and it's full of feces, okay? The, I don't know, the chickens run enough, so they've added goats. Goats have larger feces, go ahead. Uh, here's a picture of it with the tent for the chickens. Uh, again, added dirt, raised it up. Uh, here is some picture, you can see the sewer coming through, the rain. Uh, you can see how much raised up it is from the neighbor's house. You can see that the building was built, was moved immediately almost adjacent to the fence and within a matter of a few feet, no permit. Um, here, feces next to the house, those are good feces. You don't see the chickens as well. Um, here, you will see the front yard. They let the horses be in the front yard some, and then they pin them on. Um, we, we all grew up in the country like I did, you know what, goat looks like, you know what, must be feces. Um, that's the front yard. You notice also down here, go back there, all these trucks and vehicles on this agricultural residential lot. Um, and some of the sheds there, next one. Notice that there is a dump truck entering and leaving the highway every single day because you've got to go work, there's a dump truck, okay? Contrast to that twice a week. Um, next one. You have, uh, entrance, this one didn't get blown up enough. And as you can see, they've got dirt crouned out there, they've got, um, trailers, um, they've got storage sheds, they even have a metal, one of those portable metal garages so the horses can get out of the rain or whatever. Next. Okay, I'm not saying, that, that's an abusive situation, but agricultural residential is not better than a zoning request where you could put conditions on the property and we can restrict it and where there is little to no impact with traffic. Now, I've noticed that the planning board, people get up and say all kinds of things, they don't say it with any knowledge of the site, okay? So, we ask you, look, what better location for this? It's a triangle lot, it'll fit the in and out traffic once. Why don't we, somebody put in agricultural residential uses now, just like that abusive situation on Plummer Road, um, that I spent three days in yesterday, last week. Not, not comparable to the conditions you're going to have. It's a comment made by the planning board, these conditions don't mean anything? Well, if you go out and run through that stoplight enough times, you'll find out what conditions mean, because you'll either get in a wreck or you'll be arrested. Now, these, these conditions are completely enforceable. We've agreed to them, um, we support them. We did that to try to make this a, um, not by matter of right use, but matter of negotiated condition. Ideally, what conditional zone is all about, protect this community and it'll be good neighbors. Agricultural residential does not have those kind of conditions. It's a general grant. You get to do anything within that, within that zone, some of which practically went over. So, in sum, we think this is very low impact. This is adjacent to a business note. Anyway, it is at a location, triangle, um, which, uh, allows the impact to be well controlled. The, uh, Mr. Farrell has worked on this hard. He's got a good company who he's very close to, um, willing to do it, specialize in this. It'd be a service industry for this area, and it will be a relief. It will have nowhere near the traffic or impact that agricultural residential grant already allows. If Mr. Farrell hadn't done it, that doesn't mean it's not allowed, it's blatantly allowed without permits. Or put residences on there and crowd it even more, and residences will come. Residences at ten trips a day per house. So, with that, I want Mr. Farrell to talk because he, he knows the area. And I want you to meet and see.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kurt Farrell, Seventeen Seashore Point, Clayton. Just want to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to, to talk about this proposal. Uh, I want to cover just a few things and a lot of what Bob said, but I'll just reiterate. So, I started this journey in May of this year. Now, I have been in contact and communication with the staff from day one. I was very clear in what I intended to do with the property. I was guided to do this conditional zoning, and that's what I've done. In fact, I've received feedback on the site plan saying, we're concerned with the semi access. So, met with the county, added the driveway, said we'll do the southbound traffic. Business opens at eight, closes at five. We won't do shipping and receiving from two to three when the school lets out. I left that meeting with a verbal, you have mitigated every concern that we have. I have put in a lot of time and energy and effort to be considerate of my neighbors, and as Bob indicated, this is very, very low impact. Past five o'clock, it's dark, you're not going to see it at all, right? One to two semis a week to bring in the material, everything else is handled by truck and trailer. I currently have semis coming in on the property to deliver pickup equipment, my own personal stuff. That's acceptable, that's been no issue. I own a truck and trailer. I leave that property often with my truck and trailer and never had an issue. Uh, and especially coming to southbound with the stoplight at the West, or West Johnson High School, but North Pleasant Cove Road, uh, by the time you get to my property, you may hit forty-five, speed limit's forty-five, but it's, it's just a, a triangle. So, they would come in, North Pleasant Cove Road, head south on Raleigh Road, come in that forty-five degree driveway, exit the property, southbound on Raleigh Road, to two ten, and pick up the interstate. So, I, I, I think that's important. And the other thing that I think Bob was showing on the, the planning map, but forty-one percent of the properties already have the IHI overlay. And my request would be covered through general business or IHI, both would be acceptable, but outdoor storage is allowed under both. And I guess for clarity, I was upfront and completely honest, like this is what it is. And again, say, or seek the guidance of the county along the way. So, uh, appreciate you to just consider those thoughts. As Bob mentioned, we got the NCDOT twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-five expansion coming. You guys are all well aware of that, I'm sure. Um, I already covered the, the follow-up meeting with the staff from the original concerns. The feedback given to me based on the site plan and based on all the reviews was no feedback given. So, if no feedback is given, then it must comply with, uh, the intention and what we're trying to do here. The only feedback has been from neighbors and the community, which I can understand, respect, and again, why we're putting in this mitigation plans to, to lower that impact. Um, the driveway, that forty-five degree driveway is a hundred and sixty-five feet long, semis about eight. So, at no point is there ever going to be an issue. Uh, and it's all designed with that in mind as well. So, uh, the vehicle's being stored. I think there was a comment made that maybe wasn't clear. Uh, that has been an email with the staff. I may not have made my application clear, but I'll clarify that now. So, office personnel's going to drive a car there. We're going to have a company truck, going to have two trailers. You're looking at three vehicles, three items. I currently already have that many trailers and a camper already there, so, but that's what's there. It's not that we're going to fill up the lot with all these vehicles. The yard is designed as overflow, so as they build skyscrapers, whatever you've got to build, big, big buildings, it's, it's, okay, you may need a little bit more material that week. A lot of it's going to come off-site or return from the job site local. It, it's, it's, it's just not a lot. So, I guess that's where I'm at. Uh, I would appreciate your consideration, the conversation that we had today. If you have any questions or concerns, I'm definitely happy to answer that or anything that may not be clear through the application process, I'm happy to discuss that.
All right, any questions?
I've got one question, yes, Chairman. Uh, Mr. Farrell, presently, you've got the, the diagonal entry.
Mm-hmm.
And the other entry is the one that's there now, maybe a hundred yards down?
It, it is.
Okay.
And it probably needs a, it's hard to put all this on the site plan, but the bell so the semi can make the turn.
Right.
And we haven't applied for DOT, understanding that there's been a lot of conversation with the change, fully intend to go through that process. So, DOT says you got to kick the driveway over a little bit, we'll kick the driveway over. None of that is an issue. I'll be fully compliant with types of trees. I mean, whatever makes this better for everyone, I'm open to, to do it with in reason.
The conditions presently list to the Class B buffer, but what about the, like a, the representation here with a fence and planting?
So, the, the fence and, uh, I think there was made mention of maybe could we plant taller pine trees. So, per the Class B buffer, I think it very specifically calls out hardwoods, things like that. I would be open to plant the, the pine trees if that made it better. I guess, I say it makes no difference for what I plant, but I just envisioned the pine trees being taller.
I just wondered if you envision a fencing as well as the landscaping?
Yeah, so that, everything is built, I guess is, is a good point. Every, the building's built, everything is built. The only change to the property will be a black fence, chain link fence, and the landscape buffering. I know one of those pictures showed a wooden fence, but that was just working through ChatGPT, but we got it. So, the only addition to this property is literally a fence and a landscape buffer. Well, I guess the driveway we have to add, but.
Any other questions for Mr. Farrell?
Yes, ma'am.
A quick question, just for clarification. Do you live on the property or does your property join this property?
No, I'm five minutes down the road.
Okay.
Well, sunny road.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. The, uh, the building that's currently on the property, um, is that going to stay or what is that for now?
It's going to stay. Uh, I'll say it's my man, Kate, but it's a heated cooled thirty by forty building. Um, that's where the office would be located, one person would work there. Uh, building would stay as is.
And the entrance and exit, um, are they both through that forty-five degree driveway or?
Negative. Uh, the entrance would be the forty-five inbound, and then the other driveway is going to be your outbound.
Gotcha.
This is the only type of stuff you store on there?
Correct.
Scaffolding.
And I'll be just transparent because it's going to come up here soon, but it's a scaffolding insulation company. The only thing stored outside is scaffolding. You can't put insulation outside, it's not meant to be there for insulation. That would come from whoever manufactures the insulation, but the company does do both.
So, I guess I had a question on that. You mainly been talking about scaffolding and the ten visits a day and two times a week. Seems to me insulation is not transported on the same flatbed trailer, so is that additional deliveries?
So, I, again, to my knowledge, insulation won't be on-site. That would come, if you order insulation for your building, it's going to come from that distributor, they're going to ship it to the job site. The company that wants to lease my land does handle scaffolding and insulation. Um, but it's not designed to, to store insulation, you can't store insulation outside, it'll get ruined, so if there is any on-site, it would be within that building.
Okay, but again, so the ten trips a day you're talking about, is it scaffolding and insulation?
Just.
Or is that just scaffolding and insulation is whatever is?
I, I do not believe insulation will be on that property.
Okay. But the, but you're talking about a potential leasing that is in the business of insulation business?
True.
Okay, okay. And I, just, just looking at some of the conditions, and I know you've, you've, you've said the entrance will only be southbound and the exit will only be southbound, and I, I have a hard time having been in the business that had a lot of truck drivers, that truck drivers are always going to come in that way. So, how, how do you regulate to make sure that those guys are, are not coming northbound and making a?
Sure. Um, well, I guess odd property is easier, but in the shipping, receiving, and talking with the, the app, or I guess the person who wants to lease the land from me, you just add that your shipping, receiving hours. To your point, is it plausible that could ever happen? I can't say no, but if you put it in your shipping and receiving, that's how it's designed, uh, the other gate's going to be closed unless you're leaving, so you can't get in there, and you're never going to make a left-hand turn on that forty-five. So, there are things that we can do, uh, with the company and easy mitigations, like shut the gate. You have no choice but to come the right way. And with only one or two a week, that's easy to mitigate.
All right, any other questions?
On the conditions, it says eight to five, um, is that enough time for staff to, I know you said there was going to be an office person, is that enough time for staff to be there and leave or lock up or shut the gate?
So.
Would it need to be extended to, in case for them to get to work early or anything like that?
I'll say I was educated in the last meeting. When I was talking about trips, I'm thinking of the truck and trailer, and that was the focus based on the conversation. But things came up like FedEx deliveries, like, oh, I didn't count that. Amazon, I didn't count that. Really, the trips are focused on the truck and trailer traffic, which I think is the concern, trying to put scope on that.
Mm-hmm.
But no, I didn't account for, I went to lunch and I came back, you know, things like that. Uh, if increasing that would accommodate that, I would appreciate it, but.
I just didn't know, like I said, for the operating hours for eight to five, if, um, something happened and a person, your person actually gets there at seven, if you should change the time. I just want to make it easier for you, um, for the conditions, if you needed to give a buffer of an hour either way, just to make sure people.
I am open to that.
Okay.
I, I've learned a lot in this process, and I'll be honest. And I have learned a ton, um, so I appreciate any guidance and, and considerations and say thank you.
Okay.
What about days of week?
Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, because that wasn't on there either.
And that would be, um, for both hours, for both three conditions, three and four the hours, and then also the shipping.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I know a lot of this was discussed, discussed at the planning board, but I guess I don't work in any type of shipping and receiving, to be honest. I guess I have a hard time understanding how you control the fact that deliveries are not made between two and three o'clock. Like, it seems to me if the truck gets there early, they don't necessarily know about this window, so although we're trying to, you know, make sure we're avoiding any type of school traffic, how can you regulate that no, no trucks can come and go between two and three PM in the afternoon?
I'd say the best I can offer is that we will lock the gates. I mean, that's the best I can offer. The reality is semi's an up and down Raleigh Road all day, every day. Uh, the one to two, we're trying to be respectful of everything, but that's my one or two. That's semis are up and down that road all day, every day. So, the best I can offer is we'll lock the gates.
I hear you. I think my concern is pulling out. It's a very narrow road for semis to try to pull on and off of. I mean, I know, you probably know that.
A hundred percent, and that was kind of that design intent, thought process with the slanted driveway on, is you can just veer off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the exit driveway, if we have to have a bigger bell or it needs to kind of turn just to provide that same access back on, I'm happy to do that. I mean, that's, that's easy.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Farrell?
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for this project?
One thing I want to, just a second. Howlett Kane, he, he, he met with the planning department, and he requested their advice on how to, and that's on May the thirteenth. I, I had all this in the, the PowerPoint, but I think, uh, we delivered him two PowerPoints and the wrong one got up. Anyway, we're learning. So, um, So, um, the, the, this is not in it. There is an email then requested.
In the packet we have, we, we have the.
The emails?
The emails, yes.
Okay. It says your requested zoning will be general business conditional zoning. The area is designated original misuse plan, which is helpful. That's from Cameron Pittman. Uh, and he says, also, thank you for responding. My goal is to be delivered by June twenty-second. She says, sounds good. Thank you.
All right. And I, I guess, uh, Mr. Spence, before you step away, since we have the, before we go to those who may be opposed, those sixteen conditions, you're agreeable to those sixteen with probably including, if you would come back, yeah, come back so we can hear, so everybody can hear you, uh, that we need to have a Monday through Friday added to, at least I think that's number three?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're agreeable to those sixteen with that change? Any other questions?
Did you want to change for the hours to be like seven to six to give a buffer? Or you need?
Yes.
Oh, like I said, I just didn't want it to be, um, like I said, some people showing up or working and outside of that operating hours.
I appreciate that.
Do it in violation.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So I would say let's, let's, if he's agreeable to these sixteen, then we can modify them once we get to our discussion, if that's what we want to do.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, anyone wishing to speak against this application, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Hi. I am Samantha Worley. I'm at six-two-one-seven Raleigh Road, right across the street. That lot is owned by my mother Kay Coates. We're her renters. We live in granddad's old farmhouse. We had a couple of concerns. Um, first of all, the amendment request lists uses that we don't think are allowed in a business zone. So, uh, section fourteen-six-fifty-two D requires that uses of a conditional district must be allowed in the general use district. And one of his purposes is semi loading and unloading. In that table in section fourteen-ninety, the closest I could find that equated to that use was Trucking Terminals Transfer Company, and that's only allowed in industrial zones. And there's nothing industrial about that area. We are all houses and farms and churches and schools. So I really just don't think that purpose is allowed based on the code. And, uh, this is just a very bad precedent for land use policy, especially in Western Johnston County. If you allow newcomers to come into the community and buy up large, cheap parcels of former farmland with no restrictions on it and then artificially inflate its value by rezoning it commercial and renting or leasing it out, that's just a bad incentive for people coming into Western Johnston County to buy up old farmland and rezone it and use it for purposes that are just not allowed. And, um, it's not consistent with the, the comprehensive plan for the roadways and the environment. I can't, I didn't see that he limited in your conditions what he actually could bring on the property. I know right now he's intending to do scaffolding, but does that leave open in the future that he could store anything on the property? Uh, there's no limit to gasoline, the number of vehicles he could leave parked there, the tanks. We've got several, the, the wooded lot that he showed behind it is actually wetlands. And there's several waterways and branches that run out. We've got several farmers in the area who still use irrigation ponds out there. So that all seems very complicated. But, um, I think I'll leave it at that. But this is, I mean, this is not really necessary. There are several commercial lots available on two-ten. That's the corridor that was supposed to be for business in that area. There's also Highway fifty very nearby. So it's just, it's not necessary. But those are the concerns I've got.
Any questions for Ms. Worley? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Clayton Daniels, twenty-two Home Run Alley, and I appreciate the time this evening.
Um, I saw some illustrations by council. Appreciate it. It, uh, helps paint an ugly picture. Helps paint an ugly picture of what could happen. Um, I've saw that they were restricting hours during the afternoon hours for school getting out. My concern is the morning, especially now it's darker. Cars fly up and down the road. If you remember when you were in high school, I didn't want my tail tore up because I was late to school. So there's a couple of times I might have done what I'm not supposed to do to get there in a, in a fashion. What I would hate to see is an invitation open to a tragic event to one of the members in our community based off land use, being used, um, not as it should. I believe it's negligence. There's a couple of great opportunities on Crete Myrtle. There's about forty lots that haven't been built on, and it's right there next to the I-40 corridor to be able to jump in and on, on and off the highway. Um, I believe the gentleman will be very successful. He's got a lot of business growing in Johnston County. Nova Norders is going to expand in Four Oaks, and I see opportunity for him to, uh, expand his business and do very well. I would just, uh, urge each of you to consider the youth and the, and around that town, um, and what could happen. And it, it just seems that it could be all avoided by using the land for what it was designed for. So I heard some other things of, uh, questions of how do you, how do you limit? What goes in, what goes out? Um, I don't, I don't know how you do that. People coming and going, how do you make sure they come in the appropriate timeframes? We all know what forty looks like sometimes. It's a, it's a parking lot. So deliveries could be late, people could show up early. Um, again, it just, it sets a bad precedent for what could happen down the road. You give the okay today, down the road, who knows what, what could happen? So that's all I got. Um, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Others? Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies.
If you would come on up to the.
If I sit at the chair, my, I've got.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, can we? Yeah, I was going to say, you can sit right there and.
A bad foot and it's been giving me a fit this week.
Why, take.
Can't be, it's got to be the weather.
That one's.
Yeah, just un, just, just un Velcro.
Yeah. No, no, no. You sit back.
And come to Velcro, yeah.
Yeah.
Just work just like this? Cool. All right.
There's always a first, do you? First, yeah.
Well, yeah. Good evening, uh, gentlemen and ladies. Uh, you've heard a lot of fancy or nice verbiage about conditions and what's going to be there and hours and.
You might tell us your name and address.
Oh, I am sorry. Thomas Honeygood Jr., seventy-five Home Run Alley, Vincent, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Okay. You've heard a lot of comments, I mean, presentations and diagrams and so forth about this site and what it would and wouldn't do and so forth. I want to speak to you from standpoint of somebody that has lived there. I'm almost seventy-five years old. I've lived there all my life. And I lived at seventy-five Home Run Alley, and I have used that road uh, since the subdivision was built for about eight years to access my house going in and out. So, uh, I feel like I know a little bit about the conditions in that area and especially about Raleigh Road. And I want to share some comments with, with y'all, if you would just bear with me. Okay. Um, I do live at seventy-five Home Run Alley adjacent to the Bruce Field subdivision. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer, and I am retired after about a forty-year career. I own property from Raleigh Road, across Raleigh Road from the property proposed rezoning. I have lived in this area all of my almost seventy-five years. Purpose of this memo is to express objections and concerns related to the proposed, proposed rezoning and to request the county deny the proposed rezoning. There are three major areas of concern associated with this proposed rezoning, and I will elaborate on those. And I believe there are others in the room who have already shared and will share the, some of these same concerns and probably some others as well. And, um, I would say that myself, none of the people that are speaking against this proposal are anti-business or anti-commercial, okay? That's not, and we're, you know, we, we're not got anything against the owner. I don't hardly know him, except seeing him come up here. And I'll, probably that is true for most of the others. So it's not that situation. This is just not a good site for this proposed business. Okay? And there's three concerns of mine, as I said. Number one, the incompatibility. There are currently no commercial developments along, along Raleigh Road in this area and no properties properly zoned for commercial industrial use that I'm aware of between coast crossroads and the Cleveland area. There are two residential subdivisions adjacent to and across the road from the property proposed rezoning. Several other nearby homes are not in the subdivision. Also, there is a church across Raleigh Road, just slightly to the north of the property in question. The property in question, to my understanding, and I'm pretty sure of this, was sold for the express purpose of the owner constructing a residential house. It was never sold with any knowledge of it being proposed to be rezoned as commercial, and I believe that, that could be verified by maybe others who will speak later. It is my understanding that NC two-ten is supposed to be, and rightfully is, the commercial corridor in this area of the county. There are already numerous commercial developments and businesses along two-ten in this area. The proposed use of the property for the uses as noted would likely create unacceptable noise levels and disruptions for adjacent and nearby residents. If vehicles enter and leave and unload at all hours of the day and night, and I know there's things being said about these are the hours, but, but you, y'all know as well as I do, this is a construction-related business. And that, and they don't, could, sometimes and a lot of times, it's not driven by hours. It's driven by schedules and what's got to be delivered and who needs what. So, uh, you know, um, it's nice to say there will only be deliveries and trucks leaving and so forth, two, two truck or trailers a week. But that is, um, you know, who's going to enforce that? Who's going to tell that driver, hey, you're the third truck this week. You can't leave the site, you know? You're the fourth truck this week. You're the eleventh, twelfth, or fifteenth truck with a trailer leaving this week. You can't leave. You can't, you can't load your stuff. You can't unload your, who's going, who's going to really, really, who's going to enforce that? Okay? And the, the business, and I truly believe there will be insulation on this site. This is a company that handles insulation and, you know, what, who, who's going to control them from storing or unpacking or, uh, leaving insulation at this site? And it sooner or later, I think, I think it's good possibility that this could turn into somewhat of an iso. It cannot really be effectively screened. There is a fifteen to twenty-foot drop in elevation between the subdivision and the site. The site is here, the subdivisions are up here. You put up a fence. You can't screen that site from, from the subdivision and from the other houses in the area. And if this property is rezoned for commercial use, future uses of the property could create even worse conditions for local residents. Raleigh Road should not be allowed to turn into a commercial corridor. We already have NC two-ten in our community, which is and logically should be the commercial area for this community. I believe that the county's land use plan states clearly that NC two-ten is the designated commercial corridor. Okay. Second item, traffic hazards. Raleigh Road is a very busy two-lane, hilly, curvy rural road. I have lived on family farm where I grew up all my life, almost seventy-five years. I'm very, very familiar with past and present conditions on this road. As a youth, I drove tractors pulling tobacco trailers up and down Raleigh Road. I would not do that today. Today, today Raleigh Road is still a rural, curvy, hilly, two-lane road, but traffic conditions have drastically changed on this road. Based on my experiences with getting on Raleigh Road from my home on Home Run Alley, I know there are many times of the day and night when traffic is almost continuous along Raleigh Road, and many of the vehicles are traveling at fifty-five plus miles per hour, and I can assure you of that. Raleigh Road is a major corridor of travel to and from West Johnston High School, and there are times, day and night, when school is in session, that traffic on Raleigh Road, to and from the school, is almost continuous. Also, Raleigh Road is a detour route when an accident or other event creates lane closures on Interstate forty, and that is a miss. It is also known that Raleigh Road is a major commuting route for people living in the area to access I-40, traveling to and from work. In other words, there are numerous times when there's a very heavy traffic flow along Raleigh Road in this area. Okay? There is a valley and a hill between the proposed business location and Coates Crossroads. From experience, I know that it can be tough at times trying to enter Raleigh Road from Home Run Alley due to northbound vehicles that pop over the hill coming from Coates Crossroads at fifty-five plus miles per hour. This is due to a limited sight line on northbound lane of Raleigh Road. This problem would only be amplified at the proposed business location. If the proposed business is developed, this would be a major traffic concern associated with this sight line. Raleigh Road is a rural road with no traffic controls in the area proposed for rezoning. Large commercial box trucks and especially tractor, tractor trailer rigs would require two to type, two to five times the amount of time as a normal vehicle or small truck to safely ingress and ingress, ingress and egress the site in question. If a northbound vehicle on Raleigh Road had to come to an unexpected sudden stop or slowdown due to a truck entering or leaving the proposed business site, it is my opinion there would be a major threat for a string of rearing collisions, especially at night or in limited visibility situations such as fog or heavy rain because of that limited sight line. And by the way, the property in the question is in a valley and is definitely one of the areas with patchy fog that the forecasters talk about. The same issues also affect the southbound lane of Raleigh Road, especially when traffic is leaving West Johnston High School. There's a hill and a somewhat of a blind curve on Raleigh Road prior to approaching the proposed rezoning site from the West Johnston side. As I stated earlier, I'm a licensed professional civil engineer. While I did not specifically practice in road design, I did enough site review and selection work in my forty-plus years of experience to be able to recognize potential red flag traffic considerations. It is my opinion, both from my forty years of engineering experience and from my own personal experience as a local resident who has used Raleigh Road almost eight years for access to my home, that the proposed business associated with this rezoning, if approved, would create unacceptable additional traffic hazards and concerns for this section of Raleigh Road. Okay. The third item, and I appreciate y'all, uh, for bearing with me and hearing me out because, uh, I think these are some of the things you ought to hear from somebody that lives in the area and knows the area. Zoning enforcement history. I've already noted, alluded, there are problems or potential problems for local residents associated with the proposed business for the rezoning. While I know the county would likely establish special conditions, limitations and so forth for the proposed business if the rezoning is approved, I could only conclude based on past experience that the conditions, requirements, et cetera, that would likely go with the rezoning apparently cannot be enforced by the county due to lack of manpower, willingness, legal limitations, or other reasons that I might not even be aware of. I speak for myself and maybe some of the other residents and property owners around Coates Crossroads in saying that I would have major questions about the county, the county's willingness, ability, legal tools, or whatever to enforce zoning requirements. A perfect example of that is PJ's Auto Service located on the north side of NC two-ten, about five hundred feet of east. 500 feet of east of Coates Crossroads. This is probably one of the grossest violations of zoning requirements in Johnston County. There's been a junkyard created there, and at times there have been as many as 50 or more junk vehicles on this half-acre lot in addition to 30 or more other vehicles. I won't go into that now, but the special use conditions that went with the rezoning for this property are a far, far cry from what the property is today. It is an ISO. And the county is well aware of the situation, been aware of it for over 25 years, and the county has never, for whatever reason, done anything of substance to enforce the special use conditions at PJ's. If problems develop at the proposed business site for this rezoning, I have no expectations or hope the county could or would do anything of substance to enforce the zoning requirements and correct the violations. I believe that adverse conditions that did develop would only worsen and very possibly a second community ISO would develop. In terms of enforcing zoning requirements and special use conditions at the proposed rezoning site, I would simply ask what would be the difference from what has happened at PJ's Auto and what would happen if a zoning violation or violation of special use conditions occurred at the proposed rezoning site if it was approved? And again, thank you for hearing me out. And again, you know, you talked about putting limitations at two tractor-trailers a week, and I think it was 10 trucks pulling trailers. If I'm wrong on that, I apologize, but who's going to enforce that? I mean, and like I said, is the business going to tell a driver that comes up that they called and they've got to deliver materials to a construction site? Are they going to tell him, look, you go back home, come back next week, you're the third, you're the third load this week, you know? Really? And insulation, this company handles insulation. They handle scaffolding, but yes, they handle insulation too. And what's going, I mean, what's to keep them from making this a storage site for insulation as well? And all the things, you know? Then you've got loose insulation bands, you know, all sorts of things that can blow out in the wind and spread all over everywhere.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Any questions for Mr. Honeycutt? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me sit.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Spence, I'll give you a chance once they get through to get back up. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, I was going to say, we've heard extensively about the concerns about outdoor storage, traffic from two Mr. Daniels and Mr. Honeycutt, but yeah, come forward. So if you've got something different, we'd like to hear that, but I think we've got the traffic pretty well covered.
Well, that's what I wanted to say. I'm James Harvey. I live at 16 Topelo Trail, about a mile and a half from that location. Just today, leaving home, pick up my grandkids from school, there was a tractor-trailer broke down on 210, their home's dead. Traffic was backed up for miles. And I traveled Raleigh Road, going to my son's house, he lived there, and I don't think I see a whole lot of tractor-trailers on the highway at this point, but I do know that if they do come, they're going to bring all kinds of problems to the neighborhood with just the traffic in a sense, because I'm not even sure if the road is weighted, Raleigh Road is weighted for tractor-trailers to even be on it. So that's one issue that I have. And like everyone has said, just the tractor-trailers being in the area, because from 6:00 in the morning till about 9:00 in the morning, traffic is humongous. And from 4:00 in the evening till 7:00 in the evening sometime later, I don't see where we need other commercial traffic coming through that area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Brookey Honeycutt. I was former principal at West Johnston High School, and unfortunately during my tenure there, five years, I experienced the tragic deaths of 14 students. Nothing can prepare you for dealing with that, the families, the impact it has on the student body. And I still have memories and live with those events every day. So my concern is, has been expressed as everyone else has, over the safety and welfare of the staff and the students of West Johnston High School. Bus drivers start going in there at 5:00 in the morning, buses roll out at 5:30 in the dark. They bring students to the high school, they then leave and go to elementary and middle schools, and then they come back during the midparts of the day in order to be there when high school students are dismissed early in the afternoon, about 2:25, I think it is. And those buses are on the road, 5:30 to 5:30, just about every day, in and out of the high school. Now, that's just the buses alone. That doesn't account for the staff that has to arrive at school very early in the morning and leaving. It doesn't account for student drivers, and I'm very familiar with those and how they enter and leave. And it doesn't account also for the ballgames, activity buses coming in, activity buses going out. It could really present for the population a terrible opportunity for things to happen, for accidents to happen. And so that's my concern. As has been noted, there are times when traffic is backed up on Highway 40, and Raleigh Road is the avenue that people use. And I heard a lot about entering southbound, leaving southbound. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer by any stretch of the imagination, but if you're going south, you've got to come from north, right? Well, the intersection north of this facility is at West Johnston High School, so the buses or the trucks, whatever they are, would be coming either from Cleveland Road or from North Coates Pleasant Crossroads, that road off of 210 and turning. And that is already a severely congested intersection, severely. But if that's the only way that they can go and enter this property, it's going to make it even more hazardous and more congested. So that's all I have to offer. I appreciate your consideration of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Spence, I'll give you a chance to respond to some of the comments.
We want to emphasize, this is extremely specialized use. So, you know, this is not a Lowe's. People are going to be driving in there all days and night to pick up building supplies. They're picking up scaffolding, okay? Most of them have to have very specialized knowledge to know how to use that scaffolding, or even assemble the scaffolding, as you see, it comes in rods. So one of the services provides services to do that. It's not going to be coming in willy-nilly on transfer trucks or just coming around the area, because it's going to be scheduled for specific scaffolding, and that's the nature of the business, okay? We're not going to have any insulation stored on there. If you make that a condition, that's fine. This is about scaffolding. The traffic, this is far less traffic than a house. We've given you those figures straight out of the Traffic Institute for Engineers, Traffic Engineer Institute, which is 10 a day per house. So you could lower the traffic in that area. And we tried to schedule it with timing, because again, it's very specialized, they'll know why they're there, they won't be just driving up for no reason with a big truck. Only on and off traffic, they're going to have, you know, most of the time, it's going to be pickup and possibly trailer, and that traffic is going to be far less than entry would be with residential. I cropped back up just about everywhere in Johnston County when I grew up, because my father told me I was going to, and I cropped in, out 210, okay? Went to the country store, the main which is still there, to get Pepsi Colas back then, because they were bigger than Cocola's, at lunch and a sandwich. And, you know, farmer equipment going in and out of agricultural zone, probably be bigger than these semis we have, they can be a pretty slowing and traffic problem. So what we're trying to do is tailor something for the spot adjacent to a business node within a business site. I know that we're asking for some expansion from that adjacent business area, but it's not general business, it's not general commercial business, it's highly specialized service business for very skilled contractors, and they are to pick that up, and it will greatly limit by the nature of the business what they do there, okay? Also, we're not going to willy-nilly violate the laws or change everything, and I do think the county has full power to enforce that, and frankly, by the business description, it's going to be enforced. So please take that into account, that's what we want to do. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to listen. If you have any concerns about conditions, installation, or whatever, we'll be glad to work with you.
Anyone from those against wish to speak? All right, we'll give you a few minutes.
Yes, sir.
That's right, then we're going to make you stand up this time.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a construction business, and most of you, you're probably familiar enough with construction to know that, you know, and these drivers, who's going to tell these drivers that they've got this, they can only enter and leave at this time of day? Who's going to tell them they can't leave at 10 or 11 o'clock at night if they've got to deliver something that, you know, next morning, if a construction crew is waiting on that scaffolding or waiting on that installation, really, they're, I mean, it's going to be driven by the demands and the business economics of this company. They'll take in materials and deliver materials and bring materials as their economics require. And again, I would just say that, you know, the special use conditions, my personal experience with enforcement of those has not been good. And I'm just concerned, not only that this business, this site gets zoned as commercial, what's to say what might come next? If this company closes and leaves, what comes next? It's still a commercial site, and there's nothing else commercial around it. You've heard about the traffic considerations.
I just wanted you to respond to what he had said. We've already heard your testimony the first time, so thank you.
Anyway.
All right. I think that we've got everybody and had the chance to provide a rebuttal, so let me see what my instructions are here. I will close the public discussion portion of this hearing and call on Mr. Newton to come forward and summarize and present the planning board's recommendations.
Yes, sir. As it relates to case 25-05, the planning board does recommend denial and offers for your consideration a resolution of statement of consistency in that statement of consistency. You will see that they do recommend denial based on the conflicts, what they believe to be the conflicts with the type of traffic generated, maybe not the, or the type of traffic or vehicles that would be entering and leaving the site, more so than the actual traffic generation itself, and that it is not consistent with the land use plan, future land use place type, which is regional mixed use. Glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Newton?
So I did have one now that I found in my notes. So you're talking about the, I guess, regional mixed-use center, and it says includes a mix of retail, restaurant, service, office, and civic and institutional uses. And I guess from what I've heard the applicant say, that they've referred to this as a service business, but what does our land use plan describe service business as?
Exactly. When you're, when you look at our land use plan, it describes, it's really implying that service is service at that site, so it would be such as a dry cleaners or something where it's individual, more of a public service as opposed to meaning service off-site. This is, in this particular situation, I'm not saying they're not providing a service, but it's not a providing a service on-site, the materials are being distributed from the site to an off-site location.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Newton?
To the point that was brought up earlier, if we were to allow outdoor storage as it is on this list, is there any restrictions of what can be there?
Not as it's currently written.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Newton?
Where was the closest industrial zoned vicinity within this?
I mean, 40.
It would be at 210 and 40 most likely, and that would be essentially due west of this site.
I have one question. Is the applicant the one that's going to operate this site, or is he going to lease it out to a company?
From what we've heard this evening, it sounds like he's leasing out to a company, but...
That's what I heard earlier, it implied it was going to be leased. Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Newton. I will, and we've already asked the applicant about agreeing to the 16 conditions as they're presented now, so I will close the hearing and turn it over to the board for their discussion. I would like to suggest to the board that we look at two things before, if we want to dive into the conditions, and those are, is this consistent with our land use plan? And is it in the public interest and its reasonableness? So maybe we answer that question before we start going further into discussing conditions, which it sounds like we have some questions about outdoor storage at a minimum.
Well, I've stated in the past that I believe in freedom. I think a man ought to be able to do on his own land what he wants to do within reason. But I come from a standpoint of if he's owned that for a generation or two, you know, well before zoning, but this property was deeded in '24, and before that it was deeded to our applicant in '18, and it was zoned agriculture residential at that time. And I suspect, well, I don't know, but if it was purchased for that reason, then perhaps it should be pursued at that reason. At this point, unless there's total endorsement from the community to support changing it, I can't be in favor of it, just from the standpoint of the longevity and the chain of title.
Any other comments?
If I were living out there, quite frankly, I believe I'd rather have this proposed business across from me than a bunch of chickens and roosters and hogs, but it's country, and people want it to be country, so that's not me.
Mr. Chairman, getting back to your question about whether or not it was, it's reasonable in the public's interest, I think that we can take guidance from our planning board. They voted unanimously against it, so obviously they did not fully admit to his criteria. And I agree with what they're saying, what I've heard tonight and read here. The conditions also did not put a limit, specificity on what could be stored out there. We also heard that if it's a lease site, then whatever conditions that we impose on the applicant has to then be further imposed down to the less E. And your ability to enforce these tends to diminish the more you pass that authority down. I think a good example has been pointed out about, you know, we're not out here as agency government going out actively looking for people to shut down because they're in violation, but if there's complaints from the citizens, then we act on those very quickly and take action. I'm not sure how you're going to limit 10 trucks in there daily. If all 10 trucks show up in the first three hours, you're going to close the rest of the day? No. I think Mr. Honeycutt had some very sound observation about a construction company. They're driven by time, money, and construction schedules. They're not going to be nearly... and construction schedules. They're not going to be nearly as amenable to meeting those terms and conditions if they've got stuff that needs to be delivered out to a job site in order to keep things on schedule. So, I have real concerns about the enforceability of these conditions such as that. And the gentleman spoke about traffic out there. So, when he goes to visit his son, spend all the time of day, I've traveled that road in the morning and in the evening or toward the close of business, and the amount of traffic out there is just, it is overwhelming. I have set up stop signs at an intersection waiting to turn on Raleigh Road on the southern side of 210, and had to wait 10 minutes to be able, traffic thin enough to be able to pull out and make a left turn onto Raleigh Road to go back out toward 210. You know, that is terrible for the quality of life of people that live there on these small rural country, narrow country roads. When you've got traffic so severe, you can't even get out of your driveway. So, for that reason there, I'm concerned about trying to put an industrial fit in this residential area. So, I agree. No, it doesn't meet those two conditions.
Well, I'm going to concur with my fellow commissioners and to the point that you mentioned, sir, it, I almost hate that it's just on the outskirts of where we have a lot of that growth and development, especially with regards to industrial. But to that point, if it is a need in this area, there are several other sites very close to this that are already zoned correctly. And I think to that point, you know, we've identified these areas of where we want the commercial growth to go, and I think that's what we stick to, the areas that are already zoned properly.
All right, any other comments?
My concern is going to be, is again, the safety of being able to have the trucks come in one driveway and then out the other, because as mentioned by several others, they're going to have to come up by West Johnston to be able to take that right turn to come into the property. And that means they're going to have to come off of 40 on to other side roads. And, I mean, if you're at that stoplight right there at West Johnston, that's a narrow turn for an 18-wheeler and a semi to be able to be also in with the traffic of the school to also, just to come onto this property. So, my concern is just the traffic flow of coming in, the egress and degress on a Raleigh Road with nearby the school, I said, with the school right there. And that's a large high school. We already know how many people are, over 2,000 students are at that high school. And so, that's my concern is just the safety of the students and the staff, as mentioned, and then the neighboring communities as well driving on that with more industrial.
Well, I was going to say, I've heard, I can do a little bit of math, and I've got five, five that have concerns about it. So, I would just say, I've heard traffic, the safety inconsistent with the land use plan, so I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the statement of consistency resolution for denial as presented in the agenda packet and deny the rezoning request.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Give a minute for the room to clear out before we move on to the next item. Can you read mine?
What time? I bet I wanted to stay in here about our public utility.
I know, right?
Can't imagine.
Shandra, we're here for you.
All right.
Everybody listen.
She clears the room.
We're very excited for your presentation.
All right, the next item is presented by our public utility director, Shandra Farmer, and is Corinth Holders Elementary School Pump Station and Force Main.
Yes, thank you. This is a project that's actually been going on for quite some time. Years ago, we started a design on this project at the request of Johnston County Public Schools to allow them to be able to put the Corinth Holders Elementary School on public sewer. It's currently served by a on-site system. It's just across from the school. It's actually located at the Corinth Holders Fire Department, and Johnston County Public Schools operates and maintains that to treat wastewater generated by the school. So, we started this design years ago. At the time, the school decided they did not have the funds to proceed, so we stopped. And then again, in 2023, Johnston County Public School staff asked the county, would we aid in beginning this project again? The intent was to utilize on-call engineers that the county already had on-call, and Johnston County Schools would reimburse us. So, we started the project. We have a, we started a budget, a budget ordinance was adopted by the board for the design of the project, and under the ordinance, the Johnston County Public Schools would reimburse the county. So, design is completed. We have bid the project. It's a wastewater pump station and a force main that pumps the wastewater from the elementary school back to Corinth Holders High School, that then pumps wastewater to Archer Lodge Middle School. So, it would be all part of the county's public system upon construction and completion. The low bidder for the project was part construction. Their bid was in the amount, it was just over 2, well, it was actually almost $2.9 million. The, we've put together a project budget, and with all of the required technical design, easement acquisition, construction, contingency, system development fees for the school to connect, and the project includes an extension for the fire department to connect because the fire department is served by the sand filter system as well. So, the total project budget is $3,622,176. We propose funding this project with reimbursement from Johnston County Public Schools in the amount of $3,480,070.37, and then the Corinth Holders Fire Department funds of $142,105.63. We recommend, upon concurrence from Johnston County Public Schools and the fire department, staff is recommending award of this project, two-part construction in that amount, and we are asking for approval of the revised project budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions?
What kind of timeframe you looking at, Shandra?
I believe the contract was about a year, just because of the time to get equipment. Yes, so we did, this was bid in August, and we asked the contractor to extend bids 30 days. So, the bids do expire on November the 6th or, I believe, the 7th. So, we do, we have, that's when the, that's, we have to make a decision by that time.
About four days.
That's correct.
No pressure.
No pressure.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I see it reads in here in this request that the existing project budget is based on reimbursement for all project costs from Johnston County Public Schools. Is that still the case?
The revenue proposed for the project is reimbursement from public schools for the $3.48 million, and then the $142,000 for the fire department.
Fire department, okay.
So, in conversations with Corinth Holders Fire Department, they have their $142,105.63 in their bank account fund balance, and they are willing to go ahead and disfront that money. But it's my understanding, and some of you may have later information than I do, that the school, the public school system had about $2 million toward this project, but they're still short $980,070.37 being able to do this. Does that sound about right?
That's pretty close.
Close as I can get, anyway. So, I guess that's the question, too, is how do we handle that $980,070.37 to be able to, you know, we can approve the project, but then the funding is going to have to come from somewhere in addition to what the school system has and the fire department has. So, that's going to be our shortfall, is the $980,070.37. And so, yeah, I think there's been some discussions about pulling, you know, asking the school system to pull it out of their fund balance, but that's not as easy as it sounds. It would require the Board of Education to pass a resolution to do that, and then that resolution would have to come to the Board of Commissioners, in which we would have to pass a resolution in order to do that and approve it. And the problem is, is our bids run out in about four days. So, all that taken into consideration, I don't think that's a doable process where we are now. If we let the bids expire, I'm going to speak out, and Ms. Farmer, you help me here, we would run the risk of the project cost increasing if we had to rebid the project again. So, we may be compounding our problem by pushing it down the road. So, I'll just lay all that out there, because that, it's best to my knowledge and understanding, that's where we are right now as we sit here today and discuss this.
Now, Mr. Vice Chairman, I asked a question, then, if the timeline doesn't support going through that process, but it's stating here that the school system would reimburse all costs to the county, and we front the money, then they go through a process to approve the reimbursement to the county's general fund in order to preserve the viability of these bids that expire in four days?
I'm start practicing law, because Mr. Slutsor.
Let's look to counsel for that.
Let me add to that first, and just say that I think certainly any possibility could be looked at as far as even, you know, we're going to start working on next year's budget here in the next couple of months as well. But Ms. Slutsor, you want to weigh in on that?
Is this working?
Nope.
There's a switch.
She's coming to the podium, so we're good.
So, I think the question, as I understood it, was could we front the money and then get that money back from the schools at a later time? And so, I think the short answer is legally, is there a way in which that could happen? Yes, but it's very difficult to get from point A to point B. And if you award this project, what that award, what happens next is that we provide a notice of award to the contractor, and we're on the hook for the $3,622,000 for the project. And so, the money's got to come from somewhere. And the question for the utility would be, it doesn't matter where it comes from as long as it comes. And the question would be whether or not the public schools are willing and have the money somewhere, whether it be in their operating or their fund balance or somewhere else, from which they could even pull this money. And I don't know the answer to that question. What my thought would be, and again, the simplest way to move forward, if you're so inclined to do it, is that the budget, there'd be a budget revision that fills that gap, so to speak, and that those dollars be county dollars, and then you deal with that in the new budget when you're thinking about the appropriations and those sorts of things. But technically, could it happen that way? Yes, but there's a lot of steps, and I don't know the school's position with regards to that shortfall.
Well, I'd be honest with you, when I read this, that statement, that they're going to, read that again here. School system, if I can find it.
And I think that that was.
Existing project budget is based on reimbursement of all project costs from the Johnston County Public Schools. I took in that statement is they were going to use their fund balance to make up the difference to proceed so they could preserve the viability of bids.
I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't know if you've got additional information, you know? And I think that the issue was, is that it came in over budget. And so, the understanding from utility staff was that the public schools were going to make up that shortfall. I think that there were some discussions between school board members and county board members that they did not have the funds in which to do that. And so, I think the question is open as to whether or not, whether or not all project cost would be from Johnston County Public Schools. At the time that this memo was written, that was certainly the understanding. That understanding may have changed through discussions between board members, and of course, I was not a party to those discussions and.
Well, I was. And the question came up, and they said, will you fund it? And I says, why don't the school system fund it out of fund balance? And Dr. Pierce dropped the issue. So, he said, we were going to explore all the possibilities first. So, it was implied that they were going to move forward on that basis, but he was not explicit.
I agree with Mr. Stovall, though. We need to preserve the integrity of those bids. We don't need to lose that.
Well, I think the other thing to remember is, is that it's not necessarily their unwillingness to do that, it's just the fact that it's a process, it's a long process to make that happen if they pull it out of their fund balance. The other thing we have to think about here, and this to me is maybe just Patrick's world of thinking, but the school system has no way to generate revenue except from other organizations. They either get funded by federal government, state government, or Johnston County. And so, it's, you know, it's six, one and a half dozen each. Are we funded now, or are we funded in the new budget? Or how do we handle that, you know? And so, I think, you know, we can tap into their fund balance more when it comes to budget time. We've done that in the past. We've encouraged them to use some on capital, different things like that. But I think right now, I don't see another way of getting this project done and signing a contract in four days without the county funding the $980,070.37.
Well, that's a true statement there. I agree 100% with that. We're boxed in in the corner right now. We're going to preserve these bids, we're going to have to kick into money.
Is that a form of a motion?
No, I'm not going to make a motion. Because, and so, that won't, my understanding how this is going to unfold, and I didn't learn about this timeline being so arduous to get the approvals in place until just now in this discussion. But it was strongly implied that they would find a way to make it happen, and they would go ahead, and that's when I read this, and I assumed that, it strongly implies that my understanding was correct. But if it was not, then so be it. We don't need to lose these bids. Quite frankly, I'm shocked that we still got an anaerobic digester and sand filters treating our waste at a school. I eliminated most of those in the prison system 30 years ago. And I don't know how we can get an MPDS permit for something like that anymore. It must be a large deceit extreme that it goes into. I mean, basically, you've got to go into a large body of order to get those type of limits that system will treat. And so, it's probably an environmental compliance problem there.
And to answer your question, Mr. Stovall, to be direct, we don't know that that is not the case. I just understand that there have been some discussions between board members that led, some board members at least, to believe that that was not the case about the shortfall. But staff, it had not been communicated to staff that there was not a way to fund the gap.
Why don't we continue those discussions after we make the motion here?
I think that's what we're going to have to do.
We've already decided we've got to move forward anyway, whether my understanding's correct or not, or something transpired after I was in that discussion. That's neither here nor there now. We've got no, only one option in order to preserve the viability of these bids.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the proposal from utilities, and with that, continue our discussion with the school system.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now, any other discussion?
I would like to have a clarification on continue that discussion with the school system. What does that mean exactly?
Decide who's going to pony up the money.
And we can bring you a revised budget amendment at a future time period if that's what's required. At this point, it's showing that the funding is coming from the public schools. If we get information that is different than that, for whatever reason, from a, they don't have that money in capital funding, or they can't move money from fund balance for whatever reason, then we can bring you a revised project budget.
I was like to Vice Chairman's point earlier, is we are the funding. So, for us, it's negotiation, is, does it come out of their fund balance, or do we wind up, I guess, coming out of the general fund, and how do we handle that, or we reduce some sort of funding in the future to cover this $980,000?
Either way that's done, I'm not real, don't have a position one way to the other. I'm just a little concerned that it wasn't clarified upfront of what they were going to do, and it was implied that they were going a certain path, but they didn't clarify formally in what we got for us here tonight.
I was going to say, my understanding is that from, well, at least what I heard was that this wasn't a super high priority project. was that this wasn't a super high priority project. I mean, it's something that needs to be done, but it's not, it's not, the only thing pushing us right now is the deadline from the bids. That's, that's the only thing. The, what, what they have is working. It's not something they want to keep forever, but the, the deadline is the bid deadline. That's what's pushing. It's not grants that are going to expire, it's not anything like that. It's just a bid deadline. Is that correct?
Can I, can I elaborate on it? And I, to Mr. Stovall's point, I mean, these systems are very old and antiquated. They're paying about $35,000 a year to maintain the one that they have. And I think the theory is, is we would rather replace it on our time schedule than replace it when it quits working. And, and then they can't flush toilets during the end-of-grade testing or something. I mean, it, you know, it's like, it's like a chiller that goes down the hottest day of the summer. Let's, let's do it while we have time to do it properly, and it won't interrupt the school system and the school day for the students. We know it's an old system, we know it's antiquated, we know it needs to be replaced, so--
Well, as I stated, I'm quite frankly, I'm shocked that that system is still in service.
It probably should have been replaced years ago.
Because it's be very difficult to meet any type of environmental permit limits.
Yeah.
Chairman, would it be appropriate for me?
Sure.
Or is it just forward?
Yeah. All right. Come on, and go ahead.
I just want to share some of my conversations with Dr. Pierce, which had been probably seven to 10 days ago. And that may have been, there may have been discussions among board members since then, but I know he had concerns about the schools providing the money for it. And I think what happened is, this project's been talked about so long through a couple of different administrations, and it, so, anyway, the last conversation I had with Dr. Pierce, which I think probably was before commissioners and school board members may have talked, was, he was concerned about them being able to provide the million dollars. Thankfully, Ms. Farmer was able to get these bids extended, even have this conversation tonight, because they extended them an extra 30 days. And this was a school trip and project. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion.
Let's clarify the motion. The motion is based on this proposal, is they're going to provide the funding. And we're approving that. All right.
But "they" meaning not, not the extra $980,000?
We're going to have to go--
So they're going, they're going to provide the funding. We are the funding. They already have it sitting in the bank account somewhere, or we give it to them that wrote this?
Yeah. It's semantics, I guess, is what you're saying.
Yeah. So, yeah, the bottom line is, we got to prove it tonight if we want to hold the bids, and we can figure out the, the back end of where that 980,000--
But does it need to be more specific in there, that the county is going to provide that balance to ensure that these bids can be accepted? I think it should be on the record, school system--
I would include that in the motion, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't see anywhere in this proposal anything about 980,000. Is that a verbal representation that they're short?
Yeah.
As far as I know, they had two and a half million dollars saved for this part.
Okay.
That's where the gap is.
Instead of 3.4.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for that clarification. So do we, is the, is the correct motion in there somewhere?
I think it is. If, if they can't come up with that, perhaps the whole deal falls through. But unless they work with us and figure it out, how to make it happen.
At the end of the day, it is our responsibility to make sure we have functioning wastewater treatment systems for our schools. So, I mean, I think we all agree where and how it should come, but I think we all also agree that this has to be done. So--
I think the original motion is, is probably good. We'll--
That's what I was--
Okay, well.
Yeah. All right.
If you're satisfied, I am.
Yeah. Ultimately, we hold the purse strings, so--
So we're going, all the questions? We're going, all right, go ahead. That's fine.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve the, whatever that, a resolution?
Yeah.
Revised project budget, okay.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
No.
Motion carries. All right, we will move on to manager reports and comments.
Chairman, board members, I think Mr. New is going to give you an update on the UDO adoption schedule, and that's all I have to--
Yes, sir. As Mr. Asher mentioned, we do have at each of your seats and on screen, you will see a proposed adoption schedule for the UD, Unified Development Ordinance. We, one, I want to say thank you to each of you for your participation throughout this process, especially as we have had two small group sessions with blocks of, of the Board of Commissioners. And let me tell you how, just talking with colleagues across the state, that's, that's not very frequent that it happens. So, it's, it's somewhat rare. So we do appreciate that. But here you do have the proposed adoption schedule, and this has have us, and I'll just run through it briefly. It does have us with a November 18th date of final presentation to the planning board. Planning board will have access to that immediately, beginning tomorrow, for review on, then beginning on the 19th and running through January 31st, we will have a period of public comment. So we will run a media campaign on that, both print media and social media as well. December 1st, we would come to you at your December 1st meeting and call for a public hearing to be scheduled for January 20. And then on December 16th, planning board would, once again, have the ability to, to get a final view of that draft and of, of the draft language, and we would be requesting a recommendation from them. On January 20th, obviously, final present, final draft presentation to the board, Board of County Commissioners, and conduct the public hearing. And we would ask on February 2nd for an adoption. I'm glad to hear any feedback you have on that schedule, and we're glad to adjust at the convenience of board.
All right, any questions on that? I mean, I do like the extended time for public comment on there. I expect that we'll have a lot of comments. I do like it. I do like the February 2nd adoption again, as we talked about this morning about moving things forward. This will be another one. So, if, if everybody's agreeable, we will go ahead and give you the, go ahead on that schedule, I guess.
Consensus is all I'm asking. So I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
For those that are watching and listening, where can they go to, to see this and take a look, so they can have their thoughts to come to a public comment?
We will have it posted on our website, and once again, we will do a, a media campaign, both print and social media as well, to ensure everybody has access, access to that. So there are essentially four substantive chapters, which is the bulk of the ordinance. I mean, it's a lot of pages, a lot of information. But once again, they will own that website on the website as well. They'll have our information and the means or the process for which to get comments back to us, and we're glad to share those and get those incorporated as, at, at the purview of this body and a recommendation of planning board as well.
Thank you. Thank you for all the staff and the hard work of this. I know it's been a daunting task, and I'm excited to see it finally come to an end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Is anything else? All right, board reports and comments, and Mr. Godwin, I'm going to start with you and go around.
Yesterday, when I was, not yesterday, Saturday, when I was speaking at a veterans group down in Benson, I made a statement about citizens getting involved, getting involved with the local government, whether it be city or county, and educating yourselves on issues. We had a lot of folks tonight weighing in on things, whether it be the zoning situation or the, for the down home folks that was here earlier, and concerned about their fellow citizens. But the liberal media has painted a picture that so many people buy into. They talk about tax cuts for the rich. And I dare say, maybe most of those people don't realize that half of the people in this country don't pay any taxes, don't pay any income taxes. If you're going to cut taxes to anybody, it has to affect the people who pay the taxes, and that's it. Abraham Lincoln said, government shouldn't do for a man what a man should do for himself. And I know people need a safety net sometimes, but I think the people have been misled many times by the liberal media, thinking the government ought to be able to take care of them all the time. And I think we ought to look out for our fellow man through our churches, civic organizations, and at times the government as well. And we have safety nets for that. And with what's going on in the country right now, it's unfortunate that, I just hope people will get educated and not listen to one side of it and be misled. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Stovall.
I agree with something that Mr. Godwin said about, people need to get involved, and they need to understand the issues. And that is better for all of us, because if they're engaged and they're knowledgeable, they're going to pass that information on to the rank and file citizens. And a good, primary way we can get that done is by the appointments to these various committees that we have, the citizen advisory committees. And I would strongly encourage that we try to open up that process and refine the vetting process and ensure, first of all, that we got qualified candidates who want to serve on these respective boards. I've seen a lot of applications since I've been here, a little over a year that I've been on this board, and some of them are very detailed, multi-pages. I've seen others that basically just says, I'm a lifelong resident. Well, what does that qualify you to be? But there seems to be, and some of those people got selected to serve on these boards. But we have very little documentation or requirements in these applications to spell that out. And I think we ought, we need to look at that and try to refine it. And I think that if we have situations where we've got qualified people that have applied to these boards, and we've got people that have been on there for more than the normal two terms, and been granting waivers to extend their terms, that we need to look at allowing other opportunities and new ideas to come into this process. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, and I will say, I do think our HR department is, is working on revising those forms that you had mentioned with, so there can be a, well, say, a little or lot more information on there for us to make a decision.
Look forward to that.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
I was just going to say that since our last meeting, we've launched the Thriving Together newsletter, which is with our PIO staff, and very excited about that. And so I would just encourage citizens to subscribe to that newsletter to be able to get updates from the county. So like, whenever we have the public comment of the UDO, I would just really encourage our citizens to, especially if you don't have social media, it's a great way to get information. If you don't have social media and it's free, you don't have to pay for it, it's not a subscription base. So I would just really encourage our citizens to get that great email with all the information directly from our PIO staff.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, just along those lines, want to say, you know, as someone who, I guess I'm midterm, you know, I'm in the middle of, of all y'all, and I am just, you know, blown away. I felt like when I first came on, we started talking about having this comprehensive land use plan. And I remember then hearing like, oh, they do that, and then they put it on a shelf, or it's, you know, this, that, and the other, and it's just the can's going to get kicked. And I just, I know I keep saying it over and over, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I am just so proud of how much we are accomplishing. And, and to a lot of the points made tonight, you know, there's, there's always somewhere that somebody can, can have their voice be heard. And I think, you know, to Commissioner Pace's point, you know, one of the reasons I always say, now, tell them again where they can find it online, you know, because we're trying to meet people where they are. We want people to be involved. We want them to have a voice. We want them to show up, and we want to hear their opinions. You know, and even when we're talking about upgrading facilities and things like that, I just think it's so important that we're having these open conversations, and, you know, we're being very transparent, and we would all like to move every ball across the finish line as fast as possible. But I'm just really thrilled, being someone who I feel like we had a lot of ground to make up. When I first came on the board, we have made up a lot of ground in a, in a short amount of time that I've been here. And I know I don't, again, sound like a broken record, but I'm just, I'm really excited, really proud of all the things that we are continuing to, to move along, upgrade, and, and make processes and systems better. And, and some of that does come from, from new voices, but it also comes from just collaboration and being very open and transparent with our, our citizens and our communities. So, thanks to everybody who plays a part in that.
All right, Commissioner Rose?
One year ago, the first Monday in November, which was November 4th last year, this board took a vote and, and selected me as the new chair, new commissioner, not chair, commissioner. So, so I've been here for--
That's one gentleman.
Sorry, sorry.
That's when we bought your chair.
Yeah, exactly. So, it has been quite a year, and I hope that everyone on this board is looking back and doesn't have any buyer's remorse. And, and even more than that, I hope that the citizens of Johnston County have been able to see and appreciate the, the hard work I've been putting in for, for this job. And not only all the meetings that you see here, but the subcommittee meetings, or the meetings that, with the I-95 by 40 Alliance that I go to, and the Heritage Commission, and Sports Council, and all of the various other things that, that this job entails. It's been, it's been quite a year. I've enjoyed it immensely, and I just wanted to bring that up, that it's been a year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that with a period or an exclamation point?
Exclamation, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have a lot to add, other than I, I also appreciate the, the new newsletter. I think it's been very well received. It's a lot of good information for people to have. And I, I know since we came on in 2018, we've, we've done as many things as we could possibly think of to be transparent and to provide information to the public, from broadcasting these live and, and the YouTube process, and adding our public information staff, and now the newsletter. And I know we're always seeking new and innovative ways to keep the public involved, because this is their business. This is what we're here for. And it's great to hear from them, and it's great for them to be involved in what we're doing. So, I applaud all the staff that has put the effort into doing that, and, and just the responsiveness to the citizens. I think it's really important that we all share that same. And so, I appreciate everybody's work on, on that, because I think it's really important for the people.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. One, talking about county employees, and we've talked about those in state level, the, the work we do. And I just wanted to say congratulations to Sandy Wood from our Emergency Services Department. She was, made the President of the State Association of Emergency Management this past week. So, she is now in her year of service in, in that role. So, just another example of our employees not only serving the citizens of Johnston County and doing it well, but also serving at state level and leading the state in forwarding the things we do. The other, you know, talking about change, we talked about newsletters and more transparent, we talked about change to how we do board appointments and the process there, the UDO, and, and a lot of things. And, you know, I, I think a lot of times we do hear that, that it's the same old way, but I think in recent years, and then this board has proved that out, as Commissioner Rose had talked about, there's been a lot of things that are happening and moving. It's still, it's not a fast-paced, as we would all want, but I do think we are making progress. And again, if you look at what we went through in March with our strategic planning session, and look at the goals we set for that, that we are indeed moving forward. And I think sometimes we, we can't see the forest for the trees, because we've got the tree right here in front of our face. But if we can step back, we can see all the other things we've accomplished. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Good.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for tuning in.